So seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order our meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 7:31 on Tuesday, June 22. And we'll start with a roll call attendance. Please stay present when I call your name. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
And McDonald present. Our first order item is approving minutes, but I didn't, I didn't see them in our packet. Is that correct? Okay. We, we have a pile of minutes that we're reviewing for another committee as well as joint meetings. So we'll address this at our next meeting. Next item is public comment and we have three written, I think, three written comments. These are posted on the website already and I will share my screen. Can anybody see that? So that we do not have any voice comments to share. But again, all of those comments, that document is posted on the agendas page for the Amherst School Committee webpage. And before I move on to, actually no, I'll just, our next item is the superintendent's update. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris.
Couple of things, I'll be brief. Graduations this week. So tomorrow, we have graduation, six week graduation at Cracker Farm and at Fort River. They are timed exactly identically. So I'll be at Fort River and Dr. Guevara, I want to thank her for agreeing to be the central office liaison at Cracker Farms graduation. And at Thursdays, we have Wildwood. Luckily, we have perfect weather for 10:30 in the morning. Should be gorgeous both mornings. You know, restrictions have been loosened. So if any committee members do want to go, the only thing I'd ask is if you just shoot me an email so that I know and we'll make sure that you're able to attend either of those. I mean, they're both 10:30 in the morning. It may not be possible, but if you are free or just want to go see a really positive thing, you're welcome to attend and the ceremonies will be brief for just the nature of COVID. They've asked us to keep events like that smaller, but you know, the principals picked two really, really perfect weather days to have that. So really glad to be able to do those. I want to mention three other things. One is that quite a while ago, you might remember that we got a grant to look and improve water quality in our elementary school. It feels like, like I don't actually know what year it was we got that, but I know it was sometime in the last two years and just we'll show this in the update, the news last newsletter on Friday. But we got the results part of it. So you do these things and then you test the water and the water tested at the lowest possible level that is recordable. I mean, the insurance used, so that's fabulous. We'll be able to share that. So thanks to our facilities team for, you know, taking that grant and putting it to good use and continuing to improve water quality in our schools. Last night, the budget passed for the Amherst Town Council. So that is relevant here because the Amherst school budget that was passed by the school committee is part of the larger municipal budget for the town of Amherst and that passed. So this actually concludes the budget process and all of my districts are now done. So that's a good thing. So thanks for the discussion from the town councilors. You know, Dr. Slaughter, myself, Ms. McDonald did meet with them, you know, throughout the spring, both at the region level and then also for the Amherst and their engagement in the schools and support of the schools is greatly appreciated. So I want to thank the town councilors for their, their work. And the last thing I want to just say is, you know, it's, it's, I'll speak maybe more to this next week, but I really want to just thank all the staff members, right? So we, you know, talked in February and March about student return, return to in person. Students came back starting in March on a voluntary basis and then in larger numbers on April 5th and April 12th. And you know, there were a lot of legitimate concerns and fears about how it was going to go on multiple levels, not just the COVID piece, but students hadn't been in school for 13 months. And the students who chose to return, you know, we, you know, mental health, wellbeing, how were students going to reintegrate? As you might remember, we had to change classrooms because we had, you know, roughly three quarters of kids want to come back in person, quarter didn't. So that involves some staffing switches and our staff have risen to the challenge and they've done a remarkable job. And I think if, if you look back at where we were and just what we were thinking about in March on all dimensions, I feel like we, the spring has been a success. That our students have been well served by the staff members who worked with them, that classroom communities have been built and rebuilt, that students have acclimated well to return to in person or, you know, remaining remote. And we'll have a survey going out for families this week, probably by Thursday. We'll get it out before the last day of school, but it's not like due on Friday, right? It's not like report cards where it has to be done a certain time. So we'll give people a wide, wide latitude of when to respond, but we want to hear from families about what their experience was this spring, regardless of whether they were homeschooling. We're reaching out homeschooling families, return to in person or stayed remote. And you know, we're clear that we don't have a remote option in the fall, but it's still really valuable to hear how that experience was because that's going to inform how we work to integrate students who haven't been in the school in 18 or 19 months on August 30th of next year. So we do want to get both feedback, how the spring went as well as ideas for the fall, not just on the health and safety front, but also on the wellbeing front. What was that experience like? So we'll be, we'll be sharing that back with you. We, you all remember Obed fondly, I'm sure. Obed's doing very well. Debbie and I had a virtual celebration graduation thing for him a couple of weeks ago because he graduated Amherst College. He's off to graduate school in his home state of New Jersey, which is exciting for him. And he'll start that up in the fall. And so we have, we have a new Obed. His name is Masahiro and he worked with us on a survey. And as I said, that'll go out this week. It's already been translated and put in Survey Monkey, but we do want to start collecting feedback from the community about their children's experience this spring. Cause we really, we know that'll have to, that will help us to inform the fall. And you know, so really want to thank the staff for supporting students in whatever kind of format the students chose and they were in and want to collect all that evidence and be able to share it back with staff as we plan for fall. I think that's my updates for the evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Morris? Ms. Spitzer.
I, just a small question about the graduations for, will those be available for any student, regardless of what, to be in person, regardless of whether or not they were learning remote or in person?
Absolutely.
And it's going to be streamed for folks or I'm just wondering if people don't feel comfortable?
Right. So we don't, they're outside graduations and you know, the budgets of our elementary graduation, you don't see a budget line like you do at the high school in terms of graduations, which has a distinct budget line. And it's onsite, it's on our campus, which brings up all during the school day. So it brings up all sorts of privacy issues if kids are also outside and just the age of the kids, whereas at high school graduation, everyone gets the deal that it's going to get streamed because you're, you're no longer a student as you walk across the stage. So we're not able to stream it. My sense from the principals is that the latter concern you expressed is not a common concern that even for students who have chosen to be remote, I think there's, what we've experienced is a high level of feeling comfortable with an outdoor ceremony, outdoor only ceremony that we're having. So we do expect a full house in terms of the students coming in and we're, we're looking forward to celebrating that, but we are not able to, you know, live stream those events given the constraints we have.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, I mean, just because this is our last Amherst only meeting, just, just another, I know you embarrassed your last meeting, but I just want to thank for our outgoing Fort River principal, who's done a fantastic job and was, was very beloved by our community. And I just wondering if you, if you had an update on the timeline for the new principal search?
Yeah. Oh, actually I should have mentioned that. Thank you for that, Mr. Demling. So two of the candidate, two of the finalists interviewed tonight in virtual YouTube format and one is tomorrow and all the feedbacks due Friday. So we should have a decision by Monday that we'll be able to share with folks. But I apologize, I should have included that in my update. I was just watching a little window between the Pelham meeting and the Amherst meeting tonight. So I was watching one of the videos that I couldn't see because I was at the Pelham meeting. So it was fresh in my mind, but did not, I came up with a list of what I was going to say before that happened. So thank you for that reminder. I should say early next week, I don't want to commit to Monday, but early next week. Yeah. It's not, it's not a one sided deal, right? Someone has, you have to call them and they actually want to have to commit to the job. So I'll say early next week.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris? Moving on to the chair's update, just a reminder for folks. We are in the process of completing our superintendent evaluation. Would ideally like those by tonight if possible. And if you can't make that, just let, let me know so we know when to expect, when, when to expect your evaluation. We will be meeting on Tuesday to review with some, the, every, all of our summary of those as well as our full evaluation and to vote on that. And we will be, it will actually be an Amherst only meeting. We, I met with the, the chair of the Pelham Committee by email today to coordinate that. So it's going to be a sequence of Pelham School Committee, Regional School Committee and then Amherst School Committee. So we will have a one-ish subject agenda item that evening. That is, oh, and I think I will also add, we'll be talking about it momentarily in our new business, but just to the public comment, we will be responding to that when we get to into the conversation about the discussion, the process for deciding and considering a move of sixth grade to the middle school. So, and that is in our agenda. So we will be able to discuss what, what came up in the public comment. Any announcements from other committee members? Great. So we'll move on to our new and continuing business. And first up is a discussion on proposed engagement process for us considering moving sixth grade to the middle school. And as, as I just mentioned, this, this decision is, we're starting the engagement process and the consideration of it. But there, the earliest possible that we are looking at is the fall of '22. So not this coming fall, 2021. In previous conversations, what we had discussed was our, our goal of coming to a decision in the fall of 2021 for implementation the following school year. So tonight's topic is, we had Ms. Spitzer and Mr. Harrington partnering with Dr. Morris in considering and pulling together a proposed timeline and process for getting community in feedback and engagement on, on this decision, potential decision. So I'll turn that over to you all. I don't know who would like to.
Do you want me to frame it, Ms. Spitzer? Or do you want to just take it from the beginning, whatever you'd like?
I'm happy to just jump in and you can, if you'd like to correct or add to whatever.
Do you want me to share the document? Would that be easier?
I was about to copy the link, but if it's easier, maybe you could share and I could speak to it. And I apologize that it's you, the committee didn't get more time to review it ahead of time. So. So as. As the chair was saying, you know, I think this, this is a draft. This is just for starting the conversation and the decision. Goal was to have the decision made in the fall. So taking that into consideration and knowing that all of us kind of need a little bit of time to catch our breath after what's been a long year. This is the proposed calendar. And, and I also want to say, you know, to, the goal of engagement, I think, will be to communicate what we've, I think, I don't speak, I'll speak just for myself now, but I was thinking about the goal of this is to more communicate the sustainability of the classroom configuration that we have in Wildwood and Fort River. At the same time, I think we, we need to provide space and time to hear and address the concerns from stakeholders and provide school administrators with as much time as possible to develop a plan that will make the trends, the potential transition as smooth as possible. So we're trying to kind of balance two things. One is providing as much time for potential implementation of a move to the sixth grade to the middle school because of the logistics that that would involve and all of the parties involved in making that move. We'd like to maximize the amount of time, while at the same time, knowing that for much of the community, you know, they're still catching up on what will be a new configurations in Wildwood and Fort River that are going to be challenging for all of the reasons we discussed at our last meeting. So we need to build in plenty of time to, to communicate about those challenges and why we, we might consider a move to the middle school for the sixth grade. So it's been a balancing act. So you'll see, I put in blue dates that have to do with the Fort River project, elementary school building project. I don't love that name, but that's what it's being referred to now. I put in green, kind of goals related to that community engagement. And I put in pink, our meetings, the Amherst School Committee meetings. So that's kind of the key to, to understanding why, why the colors are here. So where we had specific dates, I put those in, but otherwise I just kind of put targets of the month we'd like to accomplish these goals in. So in August, you know, because of this desire to kind of hit the ground running and make a decision in the fall, it seemed like we would need to have, and we talked about this at the last meeting, public forums on the conditions that are currently present or will be present in, in the fall of 2021. And then also maybe the ad hoc group or either the three of us who have been meeting or additional folks, depending on what we decide, would potentially start to draft surveys, think about presentation and planning for listening sessions is what I've called them here. I'm open to, you know, town halls. I don't know what we want to call them, but that was the language I used because I think it worked well in the past. And then ideally in September, we would be able to hit the ground and start, start that engagement process, actually holding the listening sessions, doing the engagement with teachers, staff at Arms Elementary Schools, distributing any surveys to stakeholders. And then the goal would be in October, if you scroll down. Well, and at the end of September, have a presentation of the findings from that engagement along with a recommendation from the superintendent being presented at that. And I think it's important to have that presentation and some time to think it over before we come to a vote in ideally October to, to make a decision about the move to the sixth grade. So that feels really compressed and tight, but like I said, I think the need to implement this effectively and carefully means that you need to have the decision made early. But this is all a draft, so open to feedback.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah. Carrie, do you mind if I add just a little bit of? Some of our conversation was really helpful. So I do think there's a piece of this that's really about, and I shared with Carrie that from talking to principals about this, you know, they would like to know as soon as possible what the plan is so that they can work one way or the other. Like if we don't move sixth grade, then they can work on what are we going to do with space? And if we are going to move sixth grade, then they can convene teams and organize and support staff and the uncertainty is the hardest thing. And that's what I'm, you know, I'm hearing from principals, they're hearing from staff that the not knowing is really hard. And once, once, once there's clarity on a direction, we can form teams to develop programs and, and that's actually sort of the fun, exciting work is how we're going to make this work. But you know, you can't really do that until you know that there's a direction. I think it gets to, you know, Ms. McDonald's, I don't know the phrasing used, I can't remember from our last meeting, but the rhetorical, not rhetorical question you asked, I'll just put it that way, that's my reading, not yours, about where we are with this. I do, you know, I did like what Ms. Spitzer put together in terms of at least letting people know. I think the public comment tonight was a good indication that, that, that I and we probably need to do more sort of outreach and communication and some of the public forums in August may, you know, clarify that for people. So at least everyone knows what we're talking about, whatever their viewpoint is. I think it goes a long way in terms of building capacity of the community to understand what's, what's being discussed and what's not being discussed and what the current reality is. So I like that model as occurring before the school year. And I think it makes sense in terms of the flow. I think October seems like a reasonable timeline to then have a decision made and it gives enough time for kind of us, you know, not just administratively, I'm also talking about sixth, seventh and eighth grade teachers to get together throughout the course of the year and figure out what level of integration do we want if this moves forward? What do we feel like is, is, is not enough? It ironically is timed, the exact date that Ms. Spitzer chose for an Amherst School Committee meeting, not that she chose, but she has on this draft, excuse me, for a vote is the same day as the designer selection panel at MSBA. And there's probably no greater gift that, that we could give a designer to know that one of the options is viable, right? And Mr. Harrington, I don't want to blend topics. The next topic is talking about MSBA, but it's hard not to, because there is this interrelationship that if we do want to hit the ground running with the architect, knowing that this is either a viable or not viable option, is going to really help the, the MSBA process roll smoothly. Cause if it's not an option, we're not moving sixth grade, then we know what the deal is. And actually our study gets much more simple. If it is an option, then we can explore that in full measure. And actually the other one sort of doesn't become an option anymore. We have to go through the motions for MSBA, but we can't do a 320 person K to five school. That's not an option. We're permitted to study. So I think the sooner that the school can be make a direct, make a decision one way or the other, again, that, that's going to really inform and drive the MSBA process. And we all want kids in a new buildings or renovated buildings, whatever. When I say new, I'm not talking literally new, it's improved buildings. I'll leave it that way. As soon as possible, that's going to contribute to that. It's also going to allow the educators in the district to plan thoughtfully. I think when this first came up and there was discussion about, should we make this change for this fall? I think one of the things I pushed back respectfully, hopefully, was that we want to give our educators time to plan and do this well, to think about what a six through eight model would look like. It also gives us time to, you know, there's another committee involved in this decision as well. And so it gives us time to negotiate those pieces. So, you know, I'm quite fond of what Carrie put together, you know, effort to some minor pieces of feedback. And thank you, Carrie, for your work on that. But it really allows for just scrolling down this engagement process. It's not about is sixth grade moving or not, but how are they moving and how are we working out details on it? It gives us time to actually do that well. It's a huge task and I want to minimize that. But as things open up, open up, we can think about site visits, you know, not just in North Hampton, but there's other six or eight schools, a number of teachers, six way teachers at Wildwood, for instance, went to King Middle School and Portland, Maine, which is kind of one of these hallmark deeper learning schools. And so it gives us time to really, you know, do the job that we'd want to do, no matter what the change was. You know, and, and my only feedback for Carrie was just, I wouldn't want to go later than October ideally, because I think once you get into, this is my personal opinion, once you get into Thanksgiving season and then you get into winter holiday season, just things get hard to, you know, I've been in this world, this job a while and things that fall into that category can get lost because things get busier just because of the nature of, of the holiday season. So I really like the idea of the October piece and you know, serendipitous perhaps it's in the same date as a designer selection panel. And, and so that's my two cents, but I really appreciate the work of Mr. Harrington and Ms. Spitzer for partnering with me on, I'm thinking about this and you know, I think I speak for Ms. Spitzer where we're open to any feedback from the committee. But I think it's a great first draft and you know, Ms. Spitzer did all the work. So thank you.
I guess I have one, one question, which is more just clarification. You probably explained it perfectly well and I just didn't pay attention closely. Sorry. But the difference between August and September forums, so the forums in August are more information sharing out about what the, the 20, than the current new school year will look like and space, space issues. And then September is seek, is sharing information from the working group about a possible move of the sixth grade and getting feedback and, and listening to. Input at that point, specific to that one question. Is that correct? Is that one is about information, information sharing about the current school year and one is about soliciting feedback for the potential move? Go ahead, Ms. Spitzer.
So my thought was, so at last, last meeting, I think I heard feedback that we wanted to have an opportunity to share with the community what schools were going to look like in the fall and that it would be a good time to start kind of introducing the challenges of the new configurations in Wildwood and Fort River and the ongoing space issues at Cracker Farm. So at first I was thinking some of these listening sessions would maybe take place later, but then I realized if we. So now they're, they're kind of, they're, they're getting close to each other, but I think it's still important to have them be separate because I think the parties involved in, who might be tuning in to hear more about what their kids placement is going to look like in the fall, might be different than some, maybe some kids with kids in preschool who might be interested in engaging in this question of, you know, moving sixth grade to the middle school. Maybe they don't have kids who are directly going to be in the schools this year, but they're still stakeholders because they plan on having kids in the school. Or maybe they're just community members who have really strong feelings about it, but may not be active members of the school. So that was part of the reason I thought about, but I'm, I'm open to, to thinking through whether or not it's, it's a good idea to keep them separate, but that was my thinking.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah. So yes, wicked big thank you for putting this together. It's very easy to think about what, if anything, we want to adjust, seeing it all nicely, cleanly organized and I love the colors. So thank you. So my, my two bits feedback, one is I would like to consider us targeting initially a vote for October 5th instead of, instead of the 19th. And, and the reason for that is that, and maybe this is just, just because I've been used to this one week, every week cadence that we've had this year, which I know has been abnormal, but I feel like if, if we do all this engagement and then we have a presentation and a recommendation on the 21st, two weeks seems to me like enough time to then. There, there's a distinct possibility, we all may be in a position where we're ready to vote. Now we may say, there may be one or more members at that date that say, you know what? I need some more time to think about it or talk to people or absorb the feedback or whatnot, in which case we could just push it out. But I just think being a little bit more on the aggressive side would, would be good. And it really, the second point, which is, you know, if, if we all decide this on the Amherst School Committee, regardless of how much the community or the Amherst School Committee wants it, if the regional school committee doesn't accept it, then it's, then it's done, right? So, so this is the first, this is part of what's communicating to the community is that first the Amherst School Committee is saying, we want to send sixth grade to the middle school. Then the regional school committee has to say, yes, and we agree to that as well. Right? So there's going to be another vote. So I think, I think like requesting to the regional school committee and Ms. McDonald, maybe you can reach out to the regional chair about this, you know, scheduling regional school committee vote to, to accept that would, would be another dependency. And if that was on the 19th, then you have the final shoe, which is the regional school committee saying, yes, we're, we'll also agree to do this. It happens on the same day as the MSBA designer selection and then you're off to the races on the 19th, then you're not waiting on anything else. So those, that was my only bit of feedback, but this, this is a lot in two months. So I really appreciate how it's, how it's laid out.
Other comments or questions? I guess since Mr. Harrington and Ms. Spitzer worked together on it, that just leaves me and Ms. Lord. Yeah, I do, I apologize for not saying that first. I do really appreciate this. This is great and it's very easy to follow and understand. And, and I, I like that approach that you're, that you described, Ms. Spitzer, of separating the two topics. And, and sort of enabling, that also enables more time for people in the community to, to digest and, and really understand and be familiar with the issues in a way that if we were trying to do it all in one. Cause in a way they're, they're separate issues, right? There's, there's the current space issues that we need to deal with. And then there's another question, a very intensely related question, but the question about where, um, where do we want to have sixth grade? What, um, what do, what are folks thinking about, um, Mr. Demlin's proposal for an extra meeting, um, on the fifth? Mr. Harrington?
I mean, yeah, I, I kind of like pushing up the timeline a bit there, but, um, I don't like having more meetings in general. I'll just say that, but yeah, but I totally agree though. That's where I'm at.
I don't remember our, um, regionals, the regional school committee calendar, but if, if the fifth is a regional school committee, then that isn't an extra meeting necessarily. It's just a longer meeting. Ms. Spitzer, did you have a comment?
My only comment was that I took these dates off of the calendar. So that was the, um, where the 19th came from and I'm more than happy to, to swap it.
Dr. Morris?
The fifth, I believe is actually tentatively scheduled to be a Pelham meeting. So actually I wonder if the chair of this committee might connect with the chair of Pelham and just swap them. Uh, and then it wouldn't be an extra meeting for anyone to Mr. Harrington's point. Uh, it would just be, um, our Pelham friends would meet later in the month and, and, and you all maybe meet earlier.
I love that suggestion. Will do. And I saw some thumbs up. So that's good. Great. Any other, um, questions? I guess, uh, thoughts about sort of the listening sessions? Are you thinking that we would be running those or would, or would we engage a third party to assist us with that? Ms. Spitzer, sorry.
I, I honestly hadn't, um, I, that's the model we used before, but I think if there's cost issues, I, I don't see a reason we couldn't. It, it doesn't feel like quite as charged an issue as before, when we had, um, an outside party. I, I think, I think an outside party is great when there's really strong emotions and, and there may be, maybe we haven't. I feel like we haven't engaged enough to know that whether or not this will lead there, but in my initial thought is that if we could do it without, that might be good just for cost savings and, um, but I'm open to, to be there.
And I guess the other question, cause you have a group, an ad hoc group working on the surveys in August. Oh, sorry, but that was, that's related to the, the, the public forums about the space issues. So that would be does that, do we need to, um, will you, Ms. Spitzer and Mr. Harrington continue working on that? Or is that, um, do we need to identify other volunteers to, to partner on that? Ms. Spitzer?
I can't speak for Ben, but I, I'd be happy to continue collaborating with, with the superintendent on this.
Mr. Harrington? He raised a hand and now he's gone. And suspect, and suspect he might be having connection issues. Give it just a minute to see if he's able to join. Yep. Mr. Harrington, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say through the technical difficulties that, yep, I'm, I'm willing to continue working on this as well.
I think if nobody has anything else. Well, thank you again, um, both of you for, um, working on this. Um, this is great. Um, and it's nice to have a date. That we're, that we, whether it's the fifth or the 19th, we'll, we'll decide, we'll figure that out, but it's, it's potentially the fifth of October that will be, that we're working towards. And that's helpful. Thank you. Um, next up is our update on the elementary school building project. Also known as the MSBA, which stands for Massachusetts School Building Authority Project. Um, and, um, Mr. Harrington is our representative on the building committee and Dr. Morris also is a member of that. So I'll turn it over to you both for that update.
I'll start as, you know, um, and Mr. Harrington can definitely fill in. Uh, so we had an in-person meeting last week in the weird vortex of state real laws and not being sure their virtual meetings could continue and all that. So, but that was nothing new to me because I've, I have in-person meetings every day. And the good news is that the owner, project manager is officially on board. The letter from MSBA came in and we now are have sent in our request for services or proposals. I can't remember, uh, for the designer. We are an expedited timeline because the designer selection panel only meets every so often. It's not like they're just an ad hoc committee that meets every day. So we sent it in and we're waiting feedback that's supposed to come to by the end of the week, but I think we had a good draft. Our owner, project manager got right on it. And we will, um, hope to have that finalized so that we can advertise shortly. Get a good group of applicants for the position. Get on the MSBA panel in September for the shortlisting of candidates. So essentially there's let's say eight to 10 candidates apply. There's a group of three individuals that are appointed. One is myself, one is Mr. Harrington as the, um, appointed school committee member. And one will be, uh, the town manager or his designated, but generally it's those three roles, the, the school committee appointed member, the superintendent and the CEO of the town or mayor, things like that. And we'll meet with the other 12, 12 people from MSBA who are on that panel to shortlist, which is kind of a ranking of who you want to interview. And then hopefully back in, on October 19th, as I mentioned, at the next time with the owner, uh, with, excuse me, with the MSBA designer selection panel to do those interviews and for selection to be made so that we can hit the ground running. Uh, we did look at a draft, a couple of drafts of potential timelines. I think the, with someone on the committee, not myself, but someone with much more knowledge described as the kind of realistic conservative timeline would be a fall 26. Opening of renovated or new building, you know, we looked at some more aggressive timelines. Prior. And, um, and so, um, that's where we are. That assumes getting to a vote on election day of 2022, which is November eighth ish. I don't know what election day is, but some, some election day, you know, second Tuesday in November in 2022. For a townwide vote, uh, that townwide vote could occur before or after the MSBA vote. Um, so that's sort of, we might have flexibility on one end of that. But there's still, you know, I think the OPM wisely said a timeline is not a real timeline until you have a designer on board and they're going to really be critical players. So it's sort of a theoretical exercise to come up with a timeline when you don't have someone designing the building on your team yet. Which intuitively makes sense to me. But I do think there were architects on the building committee and they kind of all were suggesting that thinking about fall of 2026 is a reasonable way to think about it. Maybe things will work out depending on lots of variables where we can expedite that. Maybe things will slow down, but I think at least having that general sense of what our target date is uh, is helpful. And since that was shared at a public meeting, I want to share that with the school committee here. But all of that's sort of, uh, based on getting to a townwide vote on, uh, in November of 2022, which means it's a really expedited process in terms of the designers work. Uh, and, and going back to our prior point, uh, or prior agenda topic. It's, you know, another reason why the sixth grade question, having that answered is really going to be critical, um, that if that's a, if that's a hanging chad, uh, you know, all of our timelines sort of go back. So I, I'm not weighing in on what the decision on sixth grade should be, but the fact the decision's made in time for the building committee to have that direction is really helpful. That came up at our last building committee, who makes which decisions and the short story of what I answered and was confirmed by the OPM is that you as a school committee will make a decision on educational plan and that involves grade configuration. In this particular instance, grade configuration defines what option is chosen because we have two options. One option under one grade configuration, one option under a grade configuration that's K to five. Uh, and there's not a crossover between those two. Terms of site selection, the building design, all those things, that's in the bailiwick of the, the building committee. Obviously there's going to want to be some collaboration on those two. You're the educational, your, your task with being the educational leaders in the community. So you're going to have thoughts and there's going to be presentations that are with you, with the town council, as well as the building committee along the way, but the critical decision that is truly in the school committee's hands is around grade configuration. Given the MSBA's options, they allowed us to do, it really means that's going to be the fork in the road on which, which of the enrollment options is chosen. And something I said, I want to clarify because it was in the paper and, and I want to clarify what I said, what I, you know, and it's not to critique, uh, reporting of it. But, um, what I suggested at the last building committee meeting is the site selection is going to be a challenging issue, I think for the community. Um, we know there's probably, there's two likely sites. Uh, ones at Fort River School, ones at Wildwood School, and I do think there is, you know, you, I think someone said charged dialogue, you know, I think that's going to be a, a difficult issue for the community because it, it, it does not just about what's the best site for the school. It also, if we're vacating one of the sites, if we go to sixth grade, goes to middle school, that option. It means that one of the sites is then opened up for, you know, town or community use. Uh, and that enters the discussion. So the good news for you all is that's not your decision to make. You don't have to do that one, right? You may have weigh in, you may have thoughts, but the one that, that is for you is around great configuration, which really defines the enrollment and, and really sets the stage for the entire rest of the project. But the school committee has got some heavy lifting that they'll have to do. The school building committee is going to have, um, some heavy lifting on site selection and many, many other objects, um, topics along those dimensions. Sorry, it wasn't so linear, but that's where I am. Second meeting tonight and all, um, Mr. Harrington, what did I miss? That's relevant.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say you hit all of my, I have my little notes here. You hit all of my major bullet points. So I, I mean, yeah, stressing our obligation here as the school committee to kind of move on the sixth grade issue. That's, that was what stood out most to me.
So I have a question. We talked about this at our last update, um, which is about, um, outreach and community, community, sort of communication and outreach throughout the process as being critically important to the success of this project. And, and I recall that the, um, that you, you both had described that as being a role of the owner's project manager. And so I'm, I'm just curious if those conversations have begun. And just as a, you know, one of the things that concerns me, concerns is probably too strong a word, but one of the things that I think about is right now in the absence of that sort of official communication and outreach coming from the building commu- committee. It's, uh, left up to folks to maybe watch these meetings, um, and hear during these meetings or read, um, the perspective of individuals in the community that are writing, um, on their own behalf and their own, their own opinions about what they're hearing and seeing about the committee as opposed to the official sort of, here's the information from the committee. And so I'm just, I'm just a little concerned that we're not hearing very as much from, from the building committee directly. Dr. Morris?
Yeah. So I think two things on that. One is one question that came up in the past. I know the committee asked about was, um, website. And so I know the owner, project manager will, has been tasked and is well, you know, more than willing to create a website that's much more dynamic than the kind of static one that you see and that, uh, some committee members emailed samples of other building project websites that they thought were exemplary. And my sense is the owner, project manager is starting to work on that. So that's not the only part of communication, but I know that that's one thing that came up in the past. I should have mentioned in my updates. And the sense I got from them, and this actually, you know, does link up a little bit to the prior topic we just chose is, um, they did talk about when engagements would occur and they put like a color coded, um, kind of thing. Not wildly different than Carrie's of the horizontal, vertical or horizontal instead of vertical, um, that showed when engagements and until, until a designer is selected. Their perspective was there's not as much to engage on. And once a designer's selection, things accelerate very quickly. It's yet another reason that if this committee is able to make a decision about sixth grade prior, then we're not competing for engagement, you know, metaphorical space. Um, there's only so many things you can engage on. I think we've all learned that lesson for the last 15 months at once. And so that real intensive engagement doesn't really start till the, the architects are on board. And uh, as I mentioned, the, the, the date that's tentative is, is that's mid-October. So, you know, one of the reasons, and I don't think I was explicit about it earlier, is that, that really moving the engagement on the sixth grade question to earlier is it's going to really transition very nicely, in my opinion, from engagement on this is great question, which is building project related, but not, you know, right? It's a Venn diagram. There's, there's things that are and the things that aren't related. To a very quick start of the engagement, uh, from the architects and owner, project manager, starting in, you know, once they're on board in, in October, November. Um, and so I think there's actually going to be a nice flow to it. I do wonder if there's an opportunity on the sixth grade piece to be connecting with at least the chair of the building committee, uh, if not the building committee writ large, because you know, there is overlap there. And, and look at it as a sequence that's not, you know, even if it's run by different public bodies, that it, it, it doesn't feel as choppy, uh, maybe to the public because they're all on the same, they're all related, you know? So, you know, that's something that, that, um, I think maybe when I meet with Carrie and Ben, we can talk about how do we reach out to square perfect Ben's on this because he's on the building committee. Uh, we can, how do we reach out to, to the chair, you know, to Kathy? Uh, and, and think about some engagement and the building, next building committee meeting, I think will be in the first or second week in July. And you know, maybe, uh, Ben or myself can, can raise that at the larger committee and the chair is very kind and, and shares, you know, agenda drafts with me prior, and maybe we can get that on the agenda. So that we can, you know, make it feel like it's connected because they are, they are connected. They're not the same, but you know, I think it'll work well for the community.
That's it. I, I was like that suggestion in my head was kind of going in the same direction because they, they are, we're, we're so deep in it that we see them as sort of separate. Even though they're related, it's separate processes and, and but the, the difference in jurisdiction and role and who's making which decision is lost on anybody who's not on the building committee or the school committee. And I think that we can help people, you know, bring folks along. Um, as we go through this, if we sort of simplify and, and coordinate. So I love, I, I really like that suggestion. And on that. Mr. Demlin, you guys, how you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm just a couple of quick comments and a question for you, Dr. Morris. So, um, plus one to everything Ms. McDonald said, and, and I like what you said too about the flow of the communication and, you know, it's very understandable. There's going to be kind of a lull before the the architect gets on board. Um, you know, just a couple of bits that, you know, if you could take back to the OPM as they're bringing up the website, because you know, the website is part, you know, it's a small part of its technical, but then a big part of it is like, you know, what's, what's the theme of the content and how is it going to be presented? And you know, one thing I, I think is pretty important is, is naming. So, you know, I, I really appreciate that the school building committee has called themselves the elementary school building committee. Because since we haven't decided what the, which option we're going with, you know, this could be Fort River or Fort River and Wildwood. And so we want to make very clear about, about that naming, because that's obviously the first bit of information that anybody knows. What's the name of the thing? Um, I, I think also, you know, um, these things can get project websites can get overwhelmed with detail very quickly. And that's great for wonky people that follow everything. But most of the people that we're trying to reach, right, are, and have this much time to engage. And so it's, I think we always need to be thinking about, how do we describe what's going on from a 101 primer intro like human readable narrative kind of point of view, right? Well, you don't have to take a, a class in MSBA project terminology. But you can say, oh, we've been applying since, uh, X number of years ago, and then we had this project and it didn't pass. And then we applied again and we had this compromise proposal and now we have these two buildings and this is the status of the something where if, you know, like Dr. Morris, if you had like 90 seconds to pitch this to somebody in an elevator, what would you say? Right? And I think, I think that would, that will really help because, um, again, these things can get really involved. Um, and then I, the one thing I really liked in the OPM presentation at the MSBA, uh, a couple of weeks ago was that they had this, this visual timeline of, of their projection. And, you know, they had caveats of like, you know, this subject to change and whatnot, but I really liked how they say, you know, it's like this, you are here kind of thing. And I think that will be the other very general question that people have, not just what is this thing at all, but what, what's this, what's the status and where are we? You know, can, can I check out and not pay attention for a few weeks? And when are you going to be coming back and asking me my opinion on playground and whatnot? So, so the question I had for you, um, was about, um, So the question I had for you was about how this might relate to Crocker Farm. And basically, I wanted to ask you, so say we go with the 575 K to five option that would consolidate Fort River and Wildwood. My question is, do we need to expand Crocker Farm to fit all the students? I think based on my study that the clear answer is no, but I want you to check my math and logic, because it gets into DESI and MSBA stuff. Because, you know, there was speculation in years past, before we got the MSBA enrollment letter last December, that this, we might need to. And then that letter last December outlined that with the 575 K to five building, Crocker Farm could hold 375 K to five students. So when I look at 375 or Crocker Farm of non preschool students at Crocker Farm, by my math, that checks out, and that's something that Crocker can handle, because we have, if not that exact number, then within one of those number of classrooms today, even though the space is tight, as we've all seen, with our, what I think is 323, if the DESI numbers are right, for non preschool Crocker Farm enrollment today. And that's because our classrooms, like the number of physical spaces at Crocker, are somewhat under-enrolled right now. So we can add students without any classrooms. And, you know, so that's my understanding of it. And, you know, the MSBA's capacity analysis checks out the same. And then I was just looking at our past enrollments, and, you know, as recently as 2014, we had 370 non preschool students. So this is, this is a number that is historic and manageable. And that 370 in 2014 was with 65 in the preschool, right? So even if our preschool doubled from our, what we had enrolled today, we can do that 370 number. So it seems pretty cut and dry to me, but I just wanted to make, you know, but this is after reading DESI enrollments and enrollment letters. Just wanted to just get you to validate that.
Yeah, so I mean, just the simple math of it for me is, if you think of, in general, our class size has been between 19 and 20 average across the district for quite a few years. And so if you're thinking of 375, you know, you need either 18 or 19 classrooms. That's what we've had, you know, for quite some time, 18 or 19 classrooms in use. You know, at 19 classrooms, you're talking about, you know, 19.7 students. At 18 classrooms, you're talking about, you know, well, more than 20 students per class. So those are well within the guidelines that you all have for, not you all, but your historical predecessors as well, for class size. You know, I think, you know, one of the challenges about efficiency, not to get into the weeds of this, but I think it's worth mentioning is, when we have right now, what we have, which is between two and three classes per grade level, we end up with a lot of inefficiencies. Either we have two classes per grade level and some larger classes, or we have three classes per grade level, and then we have some really small classes. And so if we did move to a K to five model with that number, you know, that's sixth grade levels at 18 classrooms or 19 classrooms, that's pretty much looking at three classes per grade level, and that's more sustainable. It means teachers aren't having to change grade levels as frequently, because right now, there's always a flip-flop, right? You know, this, oh, it's the class of three moving up the next grade level. Who's going to change? And, you know, some teachers like that, the majority of many teachers, I'll say, really like to perform and perfect their craft in a certain grade level, stay with that grade level, you know, get in deep into the curriculum. So there are some benefits there as well of kind of efficiency. But it's, the number of classrooms we'll be using is similar to what we have now, you know, and what we've done for the last five or 10 years. You know, it's just a different use of how many kids are in classes and not having classes, which are lovely to have sometimes, classes of 15 or 16. But there's, you know, economy of scale costs to maintaining that model. This one would be, you know, sort of the economy of scale gets us more even to the grade level, the number of students in any particular grade level is more constant. And it fills out classes more, which long-term, from a sustainability perspective, I think there's some benefits to. So hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Demling. Okay. Sorry, I think about this stuff a lot, so.
I appreciate that question and that clarity, because I've been wondering the same thing myself. So that's a helpful context for us to have. Other questions? Not too many. Great. Are we ready to move on? Okay. So next up, we have warrant reports. I have two to read. I, Allison McDonald, authorized payroll in the amount of $661,415.38, dated June 16, 2021, and I signed that on June 18, 2021. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature, to payables in the amount of $320,595.12 for the warrant dated June 14, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of $270,474.93, revolving fund expenses of $255.94, grant fund expenses of $23,943.17, schools reopening fund of $11,178.05, CARES Act fund of $959.04, behavioral and mental health funds of $1,417.99, Article 13 funds of $12,365. And I signed that on June 18. We, next up is gifts, and I don't believe we have any gifts. Okay. Then I will move that we adjourn the Amber School Committee. Is there a second?
Second?
I know, I know you miss us and want to stay, but thank you, Mr. Harrington. Moved by McDonald, second by Harrington, and there's no discussion. So we'll call the, Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.